Father, thank you for another day that you blessed us with. Thank you for everything you give us through your son. Thank you for Henry County and our citizens. And just be with us today as we make decisions that's what's best for Henry County and the citizens of Henry County. Be with our military men and women. Keep them out of harms way, bring them home safe wherever they might be. Just be with our country and our leaders, that they might do the right things, look for you, for God, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, get a roll call, please.
This is a special meeting on Henry County, Florida County, being held on June 22nd, 2018, at 10:00 AM in the City Commissioned Chambers in Charleston, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mitchell Wills. Is Sheriff Burks on the phone?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Darryl Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, Commissioner Carson Turner, County Administrator Charles Chapman, Attorney Kelly Parsons, and Clerk Burke.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's get right into this and get started first thing here this morning.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for taking time for the special meeting. The bulk of this presentation will be made in conjunction between Ms. Jennifer Davis, Deputy Administrator, and myself. You should have received last night via email, and there's also hard copies in front of you, several schedules that we would like to go over to answer some of your questions prior to this meeting, is what was the capital improvement schedule from the budgeted amounts of this current fiscal year? The next handout you will see is a capital needs analysis of the work that we have identified that needs to be done. Some of these things are items that the Board has already been discussing throughout this year, but especially the courthouse and jail repairs. We have targeted a project amount to potentially finance between four and five million dollars for your discussion on a line of credit. And then lastly, the agenda will pick up, authorizing the county administrator to execute change orders less than $10,000 for the Lobel Airport due to limited amount of meeting times this summer. And lastly, is a change order with OAK Florida Inc. for the Lobel Airport Terminal that we need you to take action on today. With that outline of today's agenda, I will yield the floor over to Ms. Davis to begin to walk you through the capital schedule and the rest of the projects as we move forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible, on the last two items that were mentioned, just to make sure that Shane's blood pressure can go down a little bit, we could just take those two on and just get them done? I don't think anybody's gonna have any questions about it. The authorizing the county administrator to execute change orders so that we can minimize delays, or for anything that's $10,000 or less during the summer months?
Yeah, that's fine. And then a change order for the Lobel.
So I make a motion to accept option one, authorize the county administrator for Lobel Airport Terminal.
Got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then, you want to clarify that?
Commissioner Bird, when you're present via phone, you can participate in the discussion. However, the state law does not allow you to take a vote, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You still speak your mind, though, Commissioner Bird. And then the next item, it would be a change order.
That's the permission for the county administrator, right?
Yeah.
It's the other one, is the OAK.
Change order, okay.
For that with O A and K. So I'd make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, you know, just a last bit of discussion on that. I mean, it's a $942 change order that has to come back before us. Thank y'all for having to do that, but we lost money on having to discuss that even as minimum as what we did, you know? Your time extremely valuable, your time extremely valuable, OAK's time extremely valuable. Contractors look at that, they take it into consideration, they run the cost of business going up. So I think we just, we help our process when we do that. Thanks, guys.
Ms. Davis, are you ready?
Okay, so before you, on the PowerPoint, and also some handouts for the audience, I have a few. Shane, if you want to, if just happen, I pass them out to most everyone, if anybody doesn't have one, so you can follow along. So the bulk of this discussion is for the courthouse repairs. And so with your information that was sent out yesterday, we have a schedule of capital needs analysis. This is an estimate, of course. We feel like they're close for conversation purposes, but once you all make a decision on how you want to proceed, all these numbers would be firmed up, of course, and everything would have to come back before you, before it was approved. And so for, at the last board meeting, Shane brought before you the courthouse facade number, which was $901,000 to fix the administrative building for the brickwork. And so the discussion was, we needed to look at that, and we also needed to look at our other capital needs to look and see how we wanted to proceed. So in doing that, we also included in jail repairs that needed to be done. Previously, there were some discussions about feasibility studies for new jails and so forth, but it was clear several meetings ago from the Board as a whole that we wanted to repair instead of replace. So we got with the sheriff's office and got some of their estimates on their repairs and what they thought that might look like. Of course, these are estimates. In addition to that, we included the historic courthouse, there's significant repairs that need to be done to it for exterior as well as interior, but the exterior is the most important. The roof is leaking and...
Roof is a part of that?
Yes, the roof, the roof needs to be repaired. And the mortar on the historic courthouse, the water's leaking inside the mortar, and so that has to be redone. We've also had extensive conversations about our cemeteries. Ridgeline, Harlem, and Fort Denote, they all have separate needs that need to be addressed. And the Clueston sub-office in, over here, as far as doing some repairs and some consolidated entrance ways. So we tried to include all the needs that we have on this schedule. Two things that are on the schedule that don't have values next to them are our chillers, repairs for the courthouse specifically and for the jail. And also, there was some discussion about the courthouse consolidation project. With all that said, we came up with an estimate of about $4.3 million.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Why do we not have chiller numbers?
Well, we can get into a deeper discussion on that, the Commissioner Wills and I had this morning, and we've got some estimates to discuss with you today. It's not part of this schedule.
Okay.
And I did an analysis that was included in your packet, and I will switch over real quick here for the, for this year's budget and where we are, and what was budgeted and what we've spent to date for discussion purposes. We had $650,000 budgeted in the one cent sales tax. Of course, this was established before Hurricane Irma, and so a lot of our efforts have been repairing damage from Irma, which is insurance and FEMA covered. And so we've expended and/or encumbered about $200,000 of that. The Health Department, for example, the $70,000 there for the roof is going to be covered by insurance, so that's not something that we will have to spend directly.
That's roof only at the Health Department, correct?
That 70 was only for the roof, because yes, it was pre-storm.
The other, the other repairs at the Health Department, insurance is also covering all but the little bit, correct?
They have assigned a insurance consultant on their behalf to go through and analyze our estimate versus their estimate, and they are in the process of doing that.
Still don't have any final answers on that, Jane?
And you're meeting next week with them, Shane? The insurance folks at the Health? Monday, Shane is meeting with them on site.
How'd you, how'd you get that number, 350 on the jail?
On the other schedule. So Chief Nelson and myself, we had some discussions, and they gave us a listing of items that needed to be repaired.
So we don't need to do a walkthrough?
We do. So all these numbers are estimates, and so for conversation's sake, to get board direction as to how you all want us to proceed, and to give us, hopefully, a mechanism to go forward, to get these estimates that are firm, and everything would have to come back before you, so...
The only hard number is the courthouse, the new courthouse.
Correct. That is a not-to-exceed number from Kristel.
So we know that number.
We know that number.
And the rest of them could go down or up a little bit.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, the question that you just asked, Commissioner Harris, you said the only hard number, but which courthouse number, sir?
The 900,000.
900,000.
Administration courthouse facade.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That's the one, we don't have, we don't have no choice. We either gotta fix it, or it's gonna...
Take a brick.
It's gonna blow down.
It is a not-to-exceed, it could go down, but it can't go up from that number. The rest of the, remaining of the numbers are estimates.
And that's counting the windows, too, probably. Shane?
For the record, Shane Parker, the 900,000, that was an order of magnitude cost, but we broke that phase out for the east facade of the, of the admin wing. That was a guaranteed maximum price of like 260-something thousand. And that included windows, taking them off, replacing them back, using the same windows, brickwork.
Using, using the same windows?
Same windows, because they're attached to the brick, they're not attached to the structure.
The windows aren't the problem, it's the actual attachment to the surface.
The method of how?
Yes, the method.
But how old are those windows? Just asking.
How old is the courthouse?
I don't know.
But, but they wasn't put in right to start with.
And then the 900...
Those aren't the issue, so.
900,000.
If we can kind of drill this down a little bit, it'd be easier than jumping all over the place. If we could pick a facility, let's go over that facility.
I won't say another thing until you tell me to, Mr. Chair.
That way we can, you know, we're not in the jail, we're not at the courthouse. If we can, if we can pick out the jail, the courthouse, whole courthouse, one or the other, and it's just for understanding fact, that way the people that are sitting there are listening as well, they'll understand exactly which facility we're at, what we're looking at and the cost. I think it'd be a lot more organized than jumping from the jail to here, there, there.
The only thing I'm gonna say, Mr. Chair, is for the record, it was Darryl that started that.
I know. You know, we gotta accept that. So if we could, if we could just, let's just start, what did you have first on the list, Ms. Davis?
Can we just start at the top of the list?
Yes, ma'am. Let's start with one facility and go from there.
So we have the Fort Denote Cemetery Expansion Phase One Project, and so we are becoming, we are running out of spaces at the Fort Denote Cemetery. And so we have land that we already own that needs to be, that we have a permit already from South Florida Water Management to make the proper improvements that they require to expand it. And so we are looking into phasing it, so it is, we don't have to spend all the money at one time. So the first phase, I have a number there of around $300,000. That includes all, and Shane can, if you want to talk in more detail, Shane can speak to that, as far as the permitting that is required from South Florida Water Management and to expand the number of spaces available at Fort Denote.
And the Phase One will, once that 300,000 is expended, you will have increased capacity and can begin using that spot then, or would Phase Two and further phases need to also take place?
The 300,000's an estimate to get the stormwater system in and the outfall for the South Florida Water, Water Management District permit. We would have some spaces available, I don't know how many, but we would start up in the northeast corner of the site where we don't have to build any roads. And then there would be subsequent phases where we'd have to add that number. We will have to do, go for tortoise relocation for the area we're working in, because it's infested with them, so we're gonna have to work around them.
Tommy Vaughn's an expert at that.
He is. We're not gonna clear the whole site, just the area we're working in.
Knee-jerk reaction to the other phases needed to that, the expansion at that cemetery would be up and running?
Yes, it would be up and running.
No, no.
No, no. What's the, what's the cost of the knee-jerk reaction?
Not the Phase One, but if you go ahead and do Phase Two, so let's do it all. So if I said Shane, let's do it all.
And they end up, what he's saying, I think, is that you want to be able to put people in the cemetery.
That's right.
I haven't ran the numbers on that, because that's, there's, I didn't, there's roads that have to be constructed, asphalt pavement, there's a lot.
I know there's a lot to it, and I hate to just keep piling on, but if we're looking at, if we're looking at making a loan and making something happen, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't holistically look at it, at least and say, let's make it happen, let's get it there. If we're gonna borrow money and get into it, this is, this is the mechanism we're gonna use.
We can come up with a cost assessment for it. It's a 20-acre site, but we can do that.
And this is one of the ones that we're not sitting in, I mean, we've got, we've got a little time to make this happen, right? Not a lot of time. We're, like I said, lots are, lots are running out. So that cemetery is more critical than any of the others. We have the space in Ridgeline, we have the space in Harlem, it's a matter of just doing surveys. And Fort Denote, we do not have that space. And I want to do it, but I'm saying, does Shane have time to get the road, what a mess it's gonna be for the road and things like that, for us? Was the design on this at one point, I believe we still have, and it actually broke it out into schedule quarters, quarters, quarters to get it completed. So we actually have the design already, really, it's just the process of setting down and getting the numbers together, what it's gonna cost to put Phase One in. That was just enough roads to carry the front half. And that was all it was gonna be, so there, it's actually in, it's in, it just needs to be scheduled out as cost, but it is drawn up, yes.
First half, 10.
Yes, sir, but it's only doing the one corner. All you're looking at's a one quarter.
It's 20.
And then the next time you go, you jump over the street and actually roads and all's done, so that point, all you're doing is putting the beds in. Right.
Then you gotta wait on Water Management? That could be forever.
No, they're, I thought you said that.
We have our permit.
We have our South Florida permit in place, we've been extending it through emergency declarations.
Then you gotta wait on...
My only, my only point is, is I don't want to go through all these hoops and then only have a piece of the phase done. If we're gonna do this and we're gonna stick our necks out, let's, let's get, let's get it. Bite the bullet. Get the first phase done so we can start using it, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, if I might, so the ultimate ask that we're looking for today is, one, the Board's comfort level with this schedule and what they want to see done. Two, a number for us to go out and pursue financing, a line of credit, whether that's through the Florida Association of Counties Enterprise Program.
Whatever mechanism it may be.
Or looking at local banks as another option and see what interest rates come back. I want you to be able to, my ask is, authorize me to go forth with the Deputy Administrator and have those negotiations and bring back a line of credit packaging that makes sense for us at a number that can attack this schedule. So if it's 4 million, if it's 5 million, if it's 6 million, whatever that tolerance is and how to negotiate to get the better interest rate over time, I think the biggest thing that we want to make a commitment for is that it's not a commitment of payments for more than 10 years. To me, that's, getting beyond 10 years worth of payments is, is not financially sensible.
And that's exactly what we're all talking about now. What we're talking about now is gonna actually drill down to that number. We're gonna know where we're close to where we're at, so. We may can save a lot of time, because we can go through and beat all these up if y'all want to, but at the end of the day, that same discussion, which I feel like we had just had with Shane, I would like to have it with Allen Bowen, with the jail, with the courthouse and everything. Let's not put a Band-Aid and continue. If we're gonna do it, we're gonna borrow money, let's make sure we get everything. I don't want to do this, next year come back and say, oh yeah, by the way, we forgot the sidewalks, you know, and we forgot, you know, let's, if we're gonna do it, let's make it all inclusive. Let's look at what it costs, and let's make it happen.
You know, I don't want to be redundant to what Commissioner Swindle just said. I think we're all kind of nodding in agreement. The only thing I want to say, just to slow this horse down a little bit, is I want all five of us sitting up here, I hope that Charles is not gonna be given marching orders after this meeting this morning to go and start talking with said lending institutions or whoever it may be, and say, come back with a package of 7.3, 10.1, 1.2, I don't care what it is. I still need to know that Allen Bowen, the staff that we have a lot of faith in that carries out the day-to-day operations and have done so for quite some time with this county, have had time to sit, visit with him, they've all agreed. And then, to Commissioner Swindle, the other point, if we're gonna do 300,000, is that gonna allow us to be able to utilize the facility when we're done? Okay, if it's 750, but then what's the timeframe associated with that? Is it a $700,000 nut to cover, and then that's a six-month window and it's done, or is it an 18-month long window and it's done, you know? So, and then, one final question is, how, as it relates to the first item, Fort Denote Expansion, if you and Ms. Butler had to give an estimate, are we 30 days critical situation? Are we already critical, or are we, you know, 90 days and we're out of room? How hot is that iron?
That's gonna be a hard one to answer, because the fact is, you don't know how many, in some months, you may, you may slam out 30, 40, 50, 100 beds. Some months, you may go two or three. And it varies.
Depends.
So it just depends, and the fact is, I'm not sure, do we have an ideal of what a, either you or Allen want to have an ideal of how many beds we actually have left now at this point? I know at one point, we were down to around 300 or 400, and we got some back, so...
In just Fort Denote, Commissioner?
That's just Fort Denote.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good in the, in the other.
Yeah, we have, we have room to grow everywhere else. We have the property, it's just a matter of surveying. We realize this is of high priority and needs to happen.
Yes, sir. Right, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
We do understand that these things are part, but I think the most important thing right now is that we make sure that we go ahead and establish how much loan we need to cover everything, and then we can prioritize which one needs to be done first. I just hate for us to, you know, keep holding on to that, because we know we're gonna do it. We just want to give them direction to have it done.
And that's what we're talking about, Ms. Bird. Yes, ma'am, you're exactly right. We just gotta come up with that number, and as Commissioner Turner said earlier, what we have to do is come with real numbers. I mean, we're estimating today to try to get an idea of where we're at, and once we get that idea, then it'll be more of the marching orders in to go say, hey, this is where we're at, we're in the, this is the, this is the top, this is the bottom, so...
One of the things he's also saying, he don't want to come back to the Board with it. He wants us to go, you know, once we get those numbers, we want to give them marching numbers to go ahead and speak the law.
No, it has to come back to the Board.
Coming back in a way time.
No, ma'am, it has to come back to the Board. Ms. Davis said earlier, it will come back to the Board. All he's looking at is where he's allowed to speak to them and see what our options are as far as percentage, as far as payback, where we'd be, amount, if we was at 4 million at this percentage, what would our payment be? It has to come back before the Board before we're ever gonna spend a penny.
The, the hope, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, is that between now and our July 24th meeting, to have the conversations with these financial institutions, with a ballpark number, drill in to the final numbers in that same timeframe in parallel, and then bring the package to you for your consideration at the July 24th meeting.
I think it's very aggressive. I would be ridiculously impressed if staff were able to pull that off, but I saw a list that the Chair, I mean, that the county administrator sent us the other day, they're working on a handful of things. And so, I mean, Charles, it's impressive that you, I mean, wow, kudos to a government employee wanting to do something that quickly. That's great, but that's tomorrow, July 24th, in the grand scheme of things. Plus, you're gonna have fun over the 4th of July, so, you know, I mean, I hope you're able to do it, but I don't think you will.
So is the tolerance, is the tolerance for the Board for us to bring it back the first meeting in August, or?
Well, bring it, bring, if you can bring it back in July.
That'd be awesome.
This has to be part of our budget discussion. If we don't have it in July, you know, it's, it's...
You will have, you will have three opportunities to go through the budget before we get to public hearing. You'll have the meeting on July 24th, the first meeting in August, and the second meeting in August to make these determinations. The big decision point at the July meeting is the not-to-exceed trim notification millage rate. That's the deliverable that we'll be focusing on primarily between now and then in discussions with all of you. The other two workshops in August, we can drill into these numbers and really get you a hard package, and it can be a part of the budget adoption in totality.
Okay. And, you know, this is gonna play into the millage rate as well. You know, how much can we cut? Where are we gonna be at as far as, you know, payback? Because, you know, we're looking to roll back, and we've all, we've all agreed to that. We just gotta know what the point's gonna be that we can do that, too.
The strategy, the strategy that we're trying to deploy here is that the funding will come out of the one cent capital improvement tax instead of out of general fund, so that will not be dependent on the ad valorem rate.
And that, that's a good point. We kind of had that conversation a little earlier. Could you explain that just a little bit, so everyone know exactly where we're at with that?
So we have our sales tax, we have seven cents, and so that extra cent, if you will, produces a little over $2 million. And so we are looking to, we use that right now, a portion of it, to balance our general fund. And so the remaining of it stays in our capital fund, and so if we were to go out and get financing for these projects, we would allocate a percentage of that or a piece of that to pay this back, not to exceed a 10-year period would be our recommendation.
If we're receiving too many, and we should be able to allocate half of that.
Okay, so quite a bit of it goes to the general fund to balance at this time, and then the other, like $650,000 remained. So all but $650,000 remained in the, well, stayed in the general fund, the year that we're in right now. So every year that goes by, as it increases, we are becoming less dependent for the general fund, and that is something we have to continue every year, so we can get more money.
We need to wing ourselves off of that.
And we, and we...
Because the penny is for capital.
Correct.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Chair, for, for the information of the Board is that when I got here, you were 100% dependent. This year, you're about 45% dependent, or 60% dependent. We put 45% back into capital, so each year, we've been able to move a certain percentage over, so that we are winning ourselves off of that capital improvement money.
That's when we lowered the millage, and then we started using the penny to balance the budget.
Along with hurricane disaster relief, along with, along with, along with.
Along with everything.
So to move this conversation along, as we're at the Fort Denote Cemetery, is this something, Mr. Parker, we can, we can break out the plans we had and try to get an estimate where we're at on that, rather than guessing? Get a little closer to a number as far as where we're gonna, what's the total gonna be to get us in that first part of that extension and start using it, is what I'm hearing the Board say?
Yes, sir.
So if we could do that, that would be, that'd be a good kickoff for that, and then we could move on to, you know, move on down the line a little bit.
Okay, so Ridgeline and Harlem Cemetery, $100,000. We know that we need to, we want to put up a decorative fence or some kind of buffer, if you will, for where we took the trees out at Ridgeline. We also would like to go to a well system with treated water to get off the city water to reduce our irrigation cost every month. With that, there are some lines that are busted that need to be repaired, and some pressure issues, if you will, with the sprinklers that need to be addressed at Ridgeline. And Harlem, there is some different, different issues, but a few, not as much as Ridgeline, just a few small issues to address there, so we're making sure we're touching all of our cemeteries.
On both, on both of those, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that is an estimate as to what that would look like. Allen has been talking with several folks to get some estimates for the well and the line repair. As far as the next line, cemetery landscaping and renovations in general, there's been quite a bit of discussion about signage and landscaping.
Shade structures as well. If you've been to the Harlem Cemetery recently, you realize it's a wide-open field, there's not really a place for families to gather, to sit, to get out of the sun. It's Florida, it's hot. You know, some of these things may sound like fluff, but they're actually kind of, they're critical for a public service, especially when you're dealing with a grieving family and them trying to celebrate the life and the memory of their loved ones. So these are things that would add value, I believe, to the cemetery.
Originally in that packet, there was supposed to be a pavilion in that cul-de-sac, and it has never been constructed, so that, that was part of the original design of that cemetery, was to have that pavilion there, so that's something we can look at.
Is there a pavilion at Ridgeline?
No.
There needs to be. Well, hold on, guys. I, I understand it needs to be, but this is, I mean, I'm gonna offend some people, but be offended. It's, it, we, we, we don't have enough money today to mow the grass properly at the cemeteries. Now, we're gonna build a pavilion so that people are more comfortable when they're grieving? That's what you hire Aiken Davis for. They put up a little thing, and you're real sad while you're at the, the process, and then, and then you go to your each individual plot, and you do that. Now, guys, you know, you're gonna have to explain this one to me. I can't imagine spending money on something that is more reactionary than a cemetery, other than a jail. So you wanna build a school, I'm all about it. You wanna build a VPK, I'm all about it. Well, the, the Aiken Davis. Yes, sir. And other people that come in are, are irrigation issues. When they put those tents up, they drive stakes in the ground. When they drive stakes in the ground, it goes through our pipes. Dealt with that for 18 years. Um, we have to go back and repair that. What I was gonna say on the, on the other end of that is, I agree with you about not spending money where we don't have to. Uh, what I'd like to see is maybe get it a cost. I know in Fort Myers, at several cemeteries, what they have is a rolling canopy. And whether we can get, you know, look at that and get a price on that, we don't have our irrigation issues no more. You move that to whatever section in the cemetery you need it in, it rolls on wheels, you can take a mower, whatever, move it. That sounds phenomenal. That does away with all of our irrigation being torn up and destroyed. It also gives you the shade that you need where you need it, so.
If you've never attended a funeral in, in June, I had a family member a year before last pass away, and there was people actually passing out.
I've, I've.
So.
Very, very grandma.
I would, uh, I would encourage you to go to Fortinode and look at, uh, the Glades County one, and it is an unbelievable.
Ortona.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ortona. I'm sorry, Ortona. And look at the Glades County one, and that is a model in mind. It's not nothing fancy. It's a shaded pavilion that is made and designed for that, and it's phenomenal.
What you're gonna run into though at Ridgeline is you have no property for that. There's no property available for that. Every bit of your properties.
Platted out?
Yes. It actually, it's actually designated, uh, the whole center section there is mausoleums. So there's not, and there's not a general area in that cemetery for that. It was never designed into that.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I, you know, it's still, at the end of the day, it's a, um, it's a plan that we're discussing, so it's good. Um, your rolling canopy idea, you know, everybody wants graveside service. And I'm, and I'm about looking at it too. I mean, if you're, if you're talking about what's at Ortona, that's not anything extravagant, but when I hear pavilion, I hear, you know, blowing it out a little bit, so, okay, all right. Sorry for the interruption, but thank y'all. Oh, it's a good conversation to have. We need to make sure we're being diligent with the public's dollars.
Yes, sir.
They, they don't want us to sit up here and say we're gonna blow money, but we can't afford, like you said, to, to take care of the jail, to pay, to pay our EMS agents, whatever the case may be, so we have to be very diligent with what we're working with. Camel, Camel has the thing that goes to graveside as well, too. Everybody hurts up under there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I would love to them to see what type of price range we're talking about for the purpose. If, in, in the future, we can see that coming, I think it is a need. Sometimes people don't see it because they're not walking in it right now, but they're gonna walk in it, and they're gonna wish it was there. So I think we just need to consider that.
Well.
We'll look at it.
I don't think Commissioner Bird or any of y'all are directing your, uh, comments at me personally. I will tell you this. I've buried a handful of humans in the last few years. It's not an enjoyable experience. It's ridiculously hot. I get it. But I just, I, I wanna know what the dollars and cents are, so thank y'all.
And that's what I just asked for. No, I'm not directing at you, I'm just saying.
Yes, ma'am, I know, I know.
We don't see a need until it's there.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to see us, you know, make that happen before we even realize that it's needed.
Yes, ma'am.
But it is needed, and, um, some of the people did ask for it. Um, so I was the one that presented that because I do think it is a need, um, but I would like to see the price on it. But if we're gonna buy all the money, and if we're gonna do it right, I would like to see that included also on all of our problems if we do that.
Now, once again, if we, if we take the ideal of the rolling canopy, that's, like, that's gonna take care of several issues at one time. It's a canvas aluminum frame canopy with wheels on it. Uh, they have several in Fort Myers. And I believe that's gonna take care of a lot of our issues right now, and it'll, it'll be a, a small amount, and it can take care of, you know, the pavilions for now, rather than spending, you know, 15, $20,000 on a pavilion. We can get this canopy together, and it'll, it'll serve purposes for both things, so. If we can look at that and investigate that a little bit, and that'll give us an ideal, so, but. If we could, let's, uh, let's just, let's move to the historic courthouse if we can.
So the next item and, uh, most expensive item on this list is the historic courthouse exterior. So we have an estimate of around $2 million, and let me talk about where that number came from. 10 years ago, in '08, we had Chris Tell do an estimate of what needed to be done at that courthouse, because we apply for the courthouse historical grants every year. Uh, we were getting around $350,000 a year for a handful of years. There was a few years where we got nothing. Now, it's gone up to a, to $500,000 a year with 150 or 125,000 dollar Janet, 150 or 125,000 dollar match. And so what's happened, the, the most critical item of the historic courthouse was the foundation. So that was the first thing that had to be done, and we had to take, uh, I think around three grant cycles and put it together to fund, it was a little over a million dollars, Shane. The original numbers that came in were around $2 million, and we got it down to about $1 million. And so that's been completed. So that was the first thing that had to be done. So now the next thing that has to be done is the roof is leaking, and the mortar, the water's coming in where the mortar, um, is between the bricks. And so that's the next item that needs to be done before the interior is done. So that's why you see exterior. So we took the 2008 estimates that included the foundation. We backed out that number that they had in '08. Uh, it's about a $1.5 million number to complete the exterior, and then we, uh, and we added 23%, which was the average from '09 to 2017 of construction inflation cost, and came up with a number that was around 1.9 million. And so we rounded up to 2 million just for conversation's sake, so you can understand where that number came from, because it's, it's a large number. Of course, if you chose to move forward with this project, uh, we would get construction experts, and they would get in there, and they would give us a real dollar figure that would come back before, before we proceeded.
That number could go out of, out of sight. And that's a courthouse only used by the school board.
Well, it could, it could go down as well. Um, I'm speaking, I've been speaking with Mr. Bowen about it, and y'all may wanna hear his part of it. He's actually been in, they looked at the roof, and they found some, some different things that needs to be looked at there. We're maybe replacing the roof rather than just repairing it. There's a lot of wood damage, um, when they actually studied it. Um, how long ago was that? Couple weeks ago. Mr. Chair, why don't you make Mr. Bowen come up, and y'all have your conversation, so we can all get educated. He didn't come up here and grab that microphone. Because we're gonna ask you questions, Mr. Bowen. You don't, we won't require you to sing until the end.
For the record, Alan Bowen, maintenance director.
Okay, we, you said you'd, you'd actually looked at the roof. Let's start with that.
We were up in the roof a few weeks ago because we had quite a bit of rain, and, and, um, we, there's quite a bit of damage on that side, so we're investigating and trying to figure out where it's coming from. And this was hurricane damage related to the tiles that came loose and everything, what's leaking through the roof. There's a lot of rotted wood damage, um, quite a bit. We didn't go through the whole buildings. We only went through part of it. So it's kind of hard to guess till we start stripping the old, there are a Spanish tile off to find out how much more damage there. There's, uh, soffit damage from the water leaking in there, too, so it's, it's quite a bit.
Did, uh, the keyboarder heard him say, well, this is hurricane damage. Do we get any insurance? Look at that, by any chance?
Well, I, I met with FEMA there, and I met with the insurance gentleman there. I don't know as what's taking place.
There's only nine tiles on the roof that were damaged?
That, that's a bunch, though, man. That'll, you gotta place that roof for that. Don't, shouldn't insurance handle that?
They have to be 30% damaged.
Man.
And, and there's possibility it could be now, because there's a lot, they didn't look from the inside out.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, so Ms. Papinol, they told you 30%, but Mr. Bowen, I mean, you know so many times, I mean, you don't, that's an, I'm assuming somebody went up there and looked at it and said, oh, yeah, it's not 30% damaged. But with your skill set, I mean, you can start pilling some stuff back and saying, no, it's, it's considerably more than 30%. Or you would at least be able to put up a discussion to say, hey, this is particularly, potentially a legitimate claim.
When I met with the insurance man backing up here a little bit, they stood on the outside looking up, which you're looking at three stories up.
You can't see nothing.
Yeah, and that's how they counted the tiles, and that's.
I mean, see, see, look, this is why I hate PRM. Let's just get that out there in case anybody's wondering. They looked at the courthouse from the ground floor with our maintenance director and said, no, it's not 30% damaged. Yeah.
Yeah, and once again, once they went.
And I'm the picture of health on the outside, you know?
Once they get in on the inside, that, that's, that's gonna be a, a discussion point that we're gonna have all, all morning is what the, how they actually adjusted it, how they looked at it, and what was actually there.
I guarantee you, Mr. Bowen, if Mr. Bowen went through it with a, a hammer and a couple things to poke stuff, and, and started his estimating list, he would be well past 30% damaged.
Yeah, we're, and once again.
I think, to Commissioner Swindle's point, we should, we should ask him to do that, and then say, we at least want a portion of that to be covered via insurance.
I think a lot of this you can see, Commissioner Carter. That's exactly my point.
Can you call him back, Jennifer? Get him down here. Was FEMA or the insurance company?
Well, this is something that within the last couple of weeks.
Uh huh.
So they came and they looked, and they said there was, it was nine, it was nine, I'm just, and I'm asking for confirmation from you two.
Yeah, at the time, they said there was nine tiles broken, and we're looking from the parking lot, and you say we're looking up at it, but we can't.
So within the last few weeks, there's been additional leaking, and you've gotten up there, and you feel that it was more than, okay.
We only looked at a portion of it.
Then. And I believe the portion you said was the southeast quarter of that building, correct? So they, they really, actually, they couldn't even see that. From the side they were on, they couldn't even see the roof, period, there. So they need to come back and do a more thorough investigation before they start telling us no.
No, nobody's walked that way.
Right.
Nobody's taken a lift and went up there. We look at it from the ground up on the outside.
Well, you can't do that.
Mr. Bowen, is, is, um, Chris Tell still mobilized onsite?
Uh, yes, sir.
They, they have a GLG lift there, do they not?
No, sir, they do not.
No, they don't anymore? Okay.
Can't they have, look at it?
Yeah, they, they can get one there because they're, they're bringing one in to make some of these repairs.
Yeah, they got $900,000 of potential contract. I think they might bring a lift in for a chat. Well, they can get one on site. Like you said, they're, they're, eventually they're going to need it anyway. RSC have one there, about 12 hours.
Y'all, y'all, y'all are clear. Is that, would that be too much to ask to reengage?
Mr. Bowen.
Okay, okay, please, thank you.
Well, and, and so, and so I'd like to ask in, uh, in a, in a twofold manner. FEMA to come and reassess as well, knowing very well that we may get told no, and then for our insurance entity to come and look as well. And, and then depending on what they say, I mean, I think we have an estimate to repair the health department of 400 and something thousand, and theirs was 67,000. So we're probably gonna be a little bit of a difference. But I just think that in the event we're told no formally in writing, then it's time for us to start making our case, so to speak, of why we think we're do this. I've heard Ms. Butler, I've heard Mr. Bowen, and I've heard, uh, Chairman Wills on different areas tell me, when it rains outside, it pours in the courthouse. That's a problem, you know, and, and so, you know, we need, we need to try to address that and then know why that's occurring. I don't think that should be a $900,000 burden that we wear completely on our own. And, and it's closer to 2 million.
Yeah, 2 million would be a little bit closer.
That's the historic, it's a 2 million. Yeah, we were, uh, we went through, we went through those and looked at them, and once we get to the, uh, new courthouse, we'll be talking about the children we've talked about many times.
Yes, sir.
Back to the old courthouse, um, there was, is there a possibility of some money left out of a grant that we can piggyback with this to keep going? You said this is gonna help with the roof, maybe?
So historically, um, we, we, we put two or three grant cycles together for the foundation, and we have a little over 270 or 200. About 270 left in, in the last one that we did, but that's gonna start at the clock tower. So it's gonna do the roof of the clock tower, it's gonna do the clock, and it's gonna seal the clock tower. They're gonna start at the top because that's where the water's coming in, and it's gonna do the east side of the.
And if everything above the, the roof running is all we have money for, so those chimneys and the clock tower will be the first, and there's a lot of water coming in through all those.
So the existing grant will cover those items.
Okay.
So that's part of it.
And then we, we'll apply every year for more grants.
Correct.
Well, once again, we're to the point where, once we go back and look at this, it is rainy season. Yeah. You know, and the more intrusion we get, the more damage we're going to have, so we gotta keep that in mind as well. Mr. Chairman, I, I, uh, in just hearing this and knowing who utilizes that building every day, and, uh, and, and it doesn't matter if you're taking it from the school board pot or the county pot or the hospital pot, it's all taxpayers. Um, I, but I do think from a legislative request standpoint, our merit gets scored through the roof. If we're making the request and the school board's making the request, and we're all lobbying through the same sheet of music as it relates toward this issue, I will hold that, uh, statement for right now until, until we get through the entire list, and then know how do we wanna prioritize, what is, what is our big ask at the end of the day, so. Right, yes, sir, that's, that's a good point. Um, so we, you wanna move to the new courthouse now?
Yes, sir. So the facade work at the administrative wing of the courthouse is $900,000. We do know, uh, at the last board meeting Shane brought before you, uh, that worked to be done for, I think it was $901,000, and not to exceed. Well, for the entire. And so he only brought to you, we, we asked him to phase it because water is coming in, and the worst part is, um, 200 and.
65.
$64,000.
Just start on that first.
And so we were looking to go forward. We had the discussion to have this meeting today in order to do that, and that is not hurricane-related, correct? And we tried every which way to get it hurricane-related, but it was not.
So you're gonna start on that now?
No, they're asking for direction, hence the genesis of this meeting.
Okay, so when, when we get to the, well, we can discuss it now, but when, to look at the bottom of the schedule, what I did with the additional schedule that I have included, I, I scheduled out this year's budget, where we were, what we've spent to see for you all to be able to make a potential decision to allow us to move forward with that first phase of this facade work, if you so chose, so we could go ahead and get on it sooner than later because it's leaking.
You could take that out of the 300.
Correct, and that's in this year's budget. No financing needed. So there's two projects going on right now, and one of them is not on the schedule, uh, and it, because it is hurricane-related, and it's replacing windows.
Yes, that would be the south judicial wing, $65,000.
Yes, and so that was hurricane-related, and so that is separate, that's not on the schedule, that's being taken care of that way. These were items that were not.
These are the windows over the Sally Port, is that what you're talking about, the south? You said the south side of that building, the judicial? I can't remember if there were the Sally Port or not. Alan, do you know?
On the south side and the Sally Port right over the ramp going up.
Right, okay. Right, it'd be a new glazed curtain wall going in.
So to talk about history of this building a little bit, um, this was before probably all of our times when that, when that building was built, but there were a lot of issues with that building and construction. There was a court case, a bankruptcy case with the construction company, and there were a lot of deficiencies in the building, um, to sum it up. And so over time, last year, in, in last year's budget, you'll remember you paid, I think it was 150 or so thousand dollars where we had to replace some windows because the windows is, and you can speak to this better than I can, but they're pulled away from the building.
Yeah, nothing attached to the tile.
So then when it rains, it pours in, and so that, so that's why we're talking about this. So over time, we have additional windows where it's pulled away from the building, and when it rains, the water just pours in. And so that, in a nutshell, is what this $900,000 is.
And sadly, the rest of them are probably gonna eventually get to the same point. They're installed by the same folks and not properly, the, you know, they're not actually adhered to the building properly. There's no clips, there's no nothing, it's just hanging there. So at one point of it, you could walk up there and see perfectly through it, a couple inches of light there, and so. Um, which is part of that good, is part of it's gonna be a good thing we can get the hurricane on part of it then, so, but there's still a lot more we're gonna be looking at.
So moving along, we have a long-term security courthouse dollar figure here. We have not implemented the consolidated entrance at this time, but it will be coming, uh, fairly soon. And we strategized with short-term and long-term solutions to having a secure facility at the courthouse. The long-term solution is to physically have a different entry point at the courthouse, um, going forward. And so in doing that, uh, we think that it could require, and again, this would all get brought, uh, brought back before you, and we would have a plan from an architect and, and so forth, and with the court security folks, um, to build on to a different entrance to be able to house an area for security, um, that's ADA compliant and so forth. And so that is what the additional figure is there.
Built into this would also be the swapping of spaces, if that's what the constitutions and the board decide to do, where you consolidate judicial-related functions into the courthouse itself. It truly becomes an operating judicial complex, and then non-judicial or court-related functions would then swap spaces. So, uh, to be specific, where the state attorney, uh, state probation, county probation offices are off of Pratt Boulevard today, there could be a swap with the property appraiser, tax collector. That way, we consolidate all functions into one unit.
Right, that's what we've talked about several times. It makes sense. Let's get all of our government or judicial under one, one roof and go from there. Uh, you know, and a part of this discussion to keep in mind is, it's gonna be, uh, the layout of this, this complex is so vast, it's just, it's, it's gonna cause issues. Once we put these openings in the middle, if we go to the middle like they've talked about, uh, we're gonna have elderly, um, you know, handicapped people that's gonna have to come all the way around the facility, or they're gonna have to cross traffic.
It's bad.
And it's, yeah, that's not a good thing. And in the rainy season, you got people who're gonna have to park on the south side of the courthouse, come down the east side to go in that entrance is the way we're looking at. So we kinda need to, you know, keep in mind these things as well. What, especially someone, you know, with a wheelchair or crutches, whatever the case may be, that's a lot to ask, especially bringing them across traffic. And I know that everyone's gonna wanna park there because it's gonna be the closest to the entrance.
And they won't be able to enter from the main parking lot.
Right, that's exactly right.
Is this, everything we're talking about, is it mandatory? Is this something we wanna do, or is it, uh, mandatory to do it?
For the consolidated entrance?
Yeah.
It's not mandatory. It's not mandatory, it is something that the constitutionals, um, requested, it's something we have been looking at as a county for probably ten years, talking about, and, and haven't, and haven't done that. And so, Dawn Oliver is here, and she could, well, she, there she is, and she could speak to it, um, if you, if you would like. Uh, we, we are the first going into, to a completely screened employees and public, but we're not the last. The circuit as a whole is looking at doing this, Collier County, Lee County, Charlotte County, some of them already have a consolidated entrance. Also, the sheriff is here, and he could speak to it if you would like to have more information, um, regarding that as well.
It's just gonna be a mess, all them people coming and going all the way around, coming across.
And that's just working on maybe a new entrance, which there's questions there, you know, could we take that, could we take the facility on the, on the west side of that building, maybe move the Sally Port, and utilize that area coming through there to make a, a one entrance and have the others as a emergency exit only?
Yeah.
So then you're coming into the parking lot.
I mean, that's what I'm just thinking.
The one way in, if, you know, a fire, whatever the case may be, they could exit through those doors, you just wouldn't be able to enter those doors. You could put them on a magnetic lock system to where they couldn't just push it and go out, so it'd be, uh, be able to still secure.
It will be emergency exit only in the short term as well, they'll all be emergency exit only in the short term, and then, um...
But the Sally Port, you gotta, this is where the Sally Port is, that's where they bring the prisoners up.
Right.
And that's where the elevators are.
Well, the elevators are on the end, that's what I'm saying, could we not utilize that space between the sidewalk and the building now? Could we not utilize that space to put the Sally Port, take that Sally Port open entrance there that goes into the courtrooms, or to the facility, and use that for the entrance? Because there's a lot of space there that could be used. On one side of that, there's a holding cell, but the back side of that's wide open, and we have an under facade there is now where it's a roof that we could actually close in underneath that, air-condition it, and bring the people out of the parking lot into the building, and, and go that way, because, I mean, like, like I said, what we're looking at now is putting in the center, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a bad situation as far as foot traffic.
But that's, I think, what we're talking about here for the long term, is, is, is constructing something in the area in which you're talking about, we don't have it all figured out, um, to be able to bring them in that way.
Okay, the sheriff's itching back here, he's bouncing, let him come talk. You gotta come up here, come on, get your microphone, sir.
Mr. Chair, you're talking about, you're talking about using that southwest corner as being our main entrance.
That McDonald's.
Makes complete sense to me, yes, sir, okay.
I was just gonna say, but Jennifer just answered it for me, I mean, yes, you can do whatever you want to with a courthouse, but what we're looking at in, in the meantime is securing the courthouse, uh, the easiest way, in, in the simplest way possible, without having to do a lot of construction, a lot of money now. What you guys are talking about, or like Jen said, long-term construction, that's, that's up to y'all, and we can discuss that at any given time.
You're wanting to do something yesterday.
Well, we have to do something now, you know, we had an incident that was pretty scary, so we, we, world's changed, we need to do something right now, so we figured that was the best and easiest, the most simplest way to do it.
That puts it in a different perspective, I understand.
Well, we understand that as well, um, but with, with the, uh, just, just for a conversation, the building where I'm talking about coming into the building would be as simple as, even if you wanted to do something temporary for now there, it'd be as simple as coming from the, taking those hedges out, coming to the sidewalk, putting a cover right there, because you already have a roof, the roof's already there, all you'd have to do is continue that to the edge of the courthouse.
You talking about the judge's entrance?
No, I'm talking about east of the judge's entrance, where that facility, when you come in the judge's entrance, there's a door.
Right.
Then there's a open area.
And you can go right to the tax collector.
You can take that straight out, take that straight out to the parking lot.
Yep.
Continue that out, put your security there, the judge still has a private entrance, you still have your Sally Port, and you would be able to bring people in and out of the building there without having them to go around or come through traffic.
Now you just tweak your security line, so instead of it's, you know, an east-west line, it's a north-south line.
We actually discussed that, but again, that's gonna take construction and moving the security down there and, and kinda revamping it, and it is kind of a narrow type of a hallway, so, but like I said, we can discuss it, uh, what Jen's mentioning is, is something that we can do, really without having to do a whole lot of major tear down.
Well, that's what we're talking about, that's gonna be a temporary.
Yeah.
But what we're discussing now is the, the long-term.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I mean, I understand the temporary, I, I understand that, what I'm saying long-term is.
Yeah.
We need to try to make this accessible, and there's a lot of space there, it's not gonna be a narrow hallway, there's actually a lot of space there that we'll utilize.
I, I, I think, I think y'all have a little...
The problem is, though, is when you come in that door, you immediately turn right to go down to the tax collector.
Yep, but...
You won't, once you extend it out, you won't.
Yeah, that's, he's, he's talking about building in addition onto that, so that you're already on your cover where you take your hedge out, now that's the area where it's open right now, that would be closed in essentially, climate-controlled, and that's where your security and everything entrance would, would exist.
So once they come through the security, how would they get to the tax collector?
They're walking right through the door, same thing.
Take a right, same thing.
Okay, so you're talking about building it outside?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha, okay, yeah.
Yep, correct, yep. Yes, ma'am.
Right.
And handicap parking over to the building, and then from the building on out to where the handicapped...
That's correct.
At the south end.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're under six figures to do that and make it nice.
Yeah, no, it would be a very nice, well, you have all that space, even in the season, you have people come in, the line could go down and come back and come through the door. I mean, there's, there's the greatest, the greatest possibility for that is, it's not that much.
Nope.
It's really not gonna be that much, it's a matter of moving some, a little bit of drainage, we have a manhole there that we can move, but in the grand scheme of things, it's really nothing compared to building and trying to get traffic around, and so we really need to, in the long term, investigate that.
And boy, you would increase the foot traffic in that parking lot, too, I think it would make it safer, nicer, everything.
Make it stay right where it's at.
Nobody moves.
Can you, can you exit the same way?
You'll come out, you can come out the same way.
Okay.
That's, the thing of it is, if you took that...
You would utilize your security all day long at this point.
You got your building, I know y'all can't see this, my drawing's terrible, you have your building now existing, you have your Sally Port, doors are here, you can take this hole underneath there, your judge's door, take this hole underneath there, you expand it straight out.
Match it up to your building, match it up to your building.
Right to the building.
Go right out.
Yeah, and you could bring your people in, go around to come through security, when you're exiting, you walk right past it.
Yep.
So it's, it's a, it's an in-and-out system.
And now you have your other fire exits, you know, through all the other things.
Bird, do you have any comments on this, the, I'm sorry to leave you there.
I, I do hear you, being that I'm not sure what's in the building, but it comes from the parking lot, and you closed off that one door, that, that may have just put a handicap and everybody.
Yep. But you're, you're in the right entrance, that's exactly right, Ms. Bird, you're seeing it in your eyes.
So we're, we're, we're all talking about the same thing.
Yep.
We just have to, just like you said, you know, long-term versus short-term, short-term, we get them, we get them secure now, we get our people secure now that's in the building, our, our people that come in to do business, and once again, you know, when you get to the parking lot, that's gonna alleviate a lot of the stress on the parking lot as well. When you just have judicial system there, you're not gonna have people coming to pay their taxes, you're not gonna have them going upstairs to see the property, it's all gonna be judicial, so they'll go there, and if they have court, jury duty, the parking lot at that point is gonna be able to hold the capacity that we need there, so I think that's gonna be a...
It'd have room, once you did that.
So, um, Ms. Oliver, do you wanna add anything to that? Okay, Sheriff, you got anything else on it?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the blanks Ms. Davis was talking about, um, there was some blanks there, if you looked at the line items, and the line items were the chillers and air handlers, and we have a number on the chiller. Uh, the chiller is a, is a two-phase system, as I had spoke about before, to where we'd never be down without air in the building. If one side was out, the other side's gonna pick up, it's gonna run with it, um, and... So, um, the, the number on that chiller, just for that, it's a dual-system chiller, like I said, it has the pumps built in, which we have six pumps in the facility now.
It's a lot, he's not willing to say the number, it's a lot.
It's a lot, it's two hundred and seventy thousand.
That's gotta count out of the sheriff's budget.
Well, that, not for the sheriff's department, he, he gonna buy one later, but we're talking about one for the courthouse right now.
Oh, I thought he was gonna...
But that gives us the redundancy that we need.
That, that takes the, that's right, we don't have to go in there at three o'clock in the morning, the judge is not happy by seven when the AC's not running, been there and done that, not a good thing. That would actually keep us with air all the time, but one system was down, the other system picks up and runs with it, so. Uh, that's the same system we're looking at when we get to the jail, and just a little, we wanna be talking about that as well, so. Air handlers, uh, those, those air handlers in the building, there are some that are, are in need, not all of them, but they are in need, um, Mr. Bowen stepped out on us. Sheriff, can you get the handcuffs and bring him back in? There, but the price on those have been ranging from seventy-five hundred with a small unit, I believe, to ten thousand for the big units, and it's gonna be the discrepancy of which ones, well, once again, he, he needs to visit these, look at those, and he'll tell us, X amount are to the point that they're gonna have to be replaced, so, and it's gonna play into the grand scheme of things, as Commissioner Swindle said earlier. If we're gonna do it, we might as well be done with it, not come back next year and sit here and argue over, we didn't do this, we didn't do that, so, uh, did you get him? Found him? We need you, Mr. Bowen. Uh, we're discussing the, the air handlers, and we, the range on those was at seventy-five hundred to ten thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, they're, they're very, you got different size air handlers in the courthouse, um, we just changed a few out this last year, and they varied anywhere from, like you said, seventy-five, one was twelve something, it depends on the size, and also how hard it is to get it out of the ceiling and everything like that.
Uh, there are, I didn't bring that exact number, I think.
Sixty.
I think there's sixty of them, but we have replaced some already, so it's not all of them that we're talking about.
A total of sixty?
A total of sixty.
Sixty-one, I believe, the exact number.
Sixty-one?
And these were, these were installed when the building was there.
That's correct, in ninety-six.
Part of this is not only the air handler, it's valve issues, and those things have gone up, too. So, um, once again, we can visit, just need to visit and see which ones need to be replaced, you know, if we don't need, if it doesn't need replacing, we don't need to replace it, but if it needs it, then...
How long does it take to replace it when it goes out?
It depends on where they're at, and the problem is, when they go out, Mr. Harris, this is something you run to Fort Myers and buy, these are on a four to six weeks to get one of these in, they have to be built. And like you said, there's a couple in the judge's chambers that are in the closet, and they're big, so they would be a little more expensive, but they're in a closet, so it's a lot easier, the ones in the attic are a lot harder to get to, but it's just, you know, we're looking at numbers, just keep in mind, we need to visit some of these, because some of them do need to be replaced.
Well, we need to replace those.
Mr. Chair, are, are we, are we losing two a year, one a quarter, I mean, how many, how, what's our, do we have an average, one a year?
About one a year, but understand in the past years, we've been patching and patching and patching.
Yes, sir.
Our patchings wearing out.
Yes, sir.
That Band-Aids wore out, so we're, like, last year, we replaced two, actually, we need to do one more now, um, and that's what we're looking at.
Mr. Bowen, would, would you have the ability to go up there and chronologically look at them, or just say, worse shape, a little bit more stressed? What I'm driving at is, could we say, we're gonna do two this year, you know, look at it two, six months from now, two, you know?
Yes, yeah, we can do that, we, we've discussed that before, and I don't know exactly.
We should make that a priority, Mr. Chair, if at all possible.
Right, well, it is, that's why we're, this is the reason I brought it up this morning, so we can all look at it and, um...
You're looking at half a million to, to do all of them?
If you did them all, you would, well, yeah, because some of them's been done, but not all of them, so you would be if you did them all, yeah.
Okay.
But they're not all to the place that, there's quite a few that are, there's some in there, like you said, we, we've had to, you know, manually adjust over the years, just to make sure they have air. And, and there's, you rob Peter to pay Paul, and Paul's eventually is gonna get upset.
I'm trying to keep a running tally in my head, and so, so far, we need to put fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to, to fix the one that had Band-Aids out, so to speak, to now, just roughly, we know it could be less, it could be more, but we need to put a number on there to accommodate for that, correct?
That's correct. And once again, the chiller is, that, that was what we've talked about many times, and that facility, well, that, when that chiller goes down, you have no air.
Commissioner Swindle, I think you could, you could, you could net it out and just really say, if we wanted to make it a fifty thousand dollar item per year, we'd probably be safe with that, a little bit more.
That almost, that's a wearout, I mean, you need to just anticipate.
Yes, sir.
In your budget, like an ambulance, you know it's gonna go, you know, as they're gonna go out.
And at fifty thousand a year, we could replace up to five units.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, you know, that's not, and eventually, when you're doing that, eventually you're gonna, you're gonna be done with it, so, that's just, that is a good number, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so the next item is jail repairs, I will give a, a summary, and if you have specific questions, you can ask, um, Mr. Bowen, and also the sheriff's department is here.
Did you say jail repairs?
Jail repairs.
So we're down there now, yes, ma'am, just making sure.
So, again, this is an estimate, this is my most, I feel uncertain estimate that we have probably on this page, uh, because we just really don't know what it's going to be until we get in there. The roof needs to be repaired, uh, there's some interior...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The roof.
Did you say repaired?
Yes, well, are you looking for repair or replace?
I'm, I'm, um, if we're into this, I would much rather hear the word replace.
Okay.
And that, and that really, that roof's where it's at, Commissioner Swindle, you're correct, that's where that roof's at.
How old is the roof?
Older than me. Oh, wait, it's younger than me, the roof is, uh...
The roof is, uh, according to Mr. Bowen, the roof is twenty years old.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm like, uh, Mike, do we need to replace the roof?
Roof's just old spring ticket.
So with it, um, needing replacement, there's some interior repairs that need to be done as a result of, the plumbing fixtures need replacement throughout, um, the facility, uh, the plumbing, um, they feel is okay, however, and so it's more of a fixture issue. The administrative wing, um, has some repairs specifically, uh, and the fire pump is still an issue, uh, that we are looking at, and Ellen can speak to that a little bit more detail about an LP gas motor that, um, they are working on getting. I do have, uh, uh, some pictures I'm gonna pass to you at the dais, just to... Look at, that the sheriff's office shared yesterday. As to some of the repairs on the interior that need to be done.
Um, let's start at the, let's start at the, uh, roof, roof repair, we, we've kind of decided that pretty much, yeah, if it needs a roof, it's been twenty years, it needs a roof. So we're gonna need to get an estimate on that, uh, to hard cost, to know where we're at with that. Someone hold the sheriff's firearm, I, I only got a question about the plumbing fixtures, I mean, these were put in, we had, we went through that entire system, and it's been about fifteen years ago, and put all new fixtures in. And the question I have there is, I know at one point, a lot of them got taken out, and they were put in originally to save water costs, and I know for a fact that some of them got taken out and bypassed. Is, isn't this something that, and, once again, someone take his firearm, isn't this something that you guys should have been doing all along, making sure these were replaced properly, because there are slown valves and different valves in there? I understand that, Sheriff, these are valves, come up here and get the microphone, please, sir, that way the public can hear you, that way, that way they can hear you, um, I understand that, and I know when they were put in, that was the reason they were put in, because you couldn't just sit there and just flush, 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 flush. Uh, so, and because we were having issues with people putting pillows and blankets and that, hence went to the muffin monster, it broke down several times, we went through all that, unfortunately, I've, I've been there, but the question I'm asking is, when these valves go out, there, there, I can't remember the cost on those, I believe they were somewhere... I think we bought them with a small PO, so it was under two hundred and fifty dollars for the valve, and the question I'm asking is, as they've been going out, have you been replacing them? So... Oh, so you're talking about the admin side, you're not talking about the jail side?
Admin side.
Okay, different, different animal then, that's the reason I was asking the question, I wasn't being mean to you like I usually am, I just wanted to know, you know, in the process, are we making sure that the maintenance, when it's going back in, it's going back in the way we designed it, just to make sure that the building's there? So if it's admin side, I, I, I haven't been there, so I'm not allowed to go there, it makes me go in the back door.
So, so, Mr. Chair, is the, is the plumbing fixtures replacement, that's being discussed on the admin side?
That's what I'm understanding, yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's a much lower cost, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's the reason I was asking, Sheriff, I wanted to...
Outstanding.
Okay, um... Administrative wing, um, that's a nightmare, that's where the, the roof needed the most, um, that's been addressed over the years, we've, we've really worked on that, trying to work together on it, um, and I believe between you and Mr. Bowen, you can speak to the board and give them the idea, I, I've been there and seen it, working on it, so maybe some of the other board members may wanna hear what you guys have to say about that portion.
Roof leaks now?
Yes, on, on the admin side, Sheriff.
Yeah, it's awful, I mean, it leaks bad, every time it rains, we have garbage cans all throughout the hallways, it's actually just like the historic courthouse, the historic jail facility. It's caused a damage inside, the roof, inner walls, I mean, paint's peeling off, we have mold, it's just...
Has been around.
We have mold.
Start after the hurricane.
Did I say mold, did I mention mold? We have mold.
I think that's your middle name.
But anyway, it, it has to be addressed, and I'm not sure, like I say, I, I, what do you say, it leaks bad.
And that, that's the roof we're talking about replacing, is that correct? Okay, I, I just want them to understand, they, they know which roof we're talking about, so everyone's on the same page here, and it's gonna be a costly repair.
It is.
Mr. Bowen estimated it at around three hundred thousand. Um, the, our roofer, we had for many, many years retired, and it's hard to get anyone to work on those flat decks anymore, so it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a costly repair, we have several companies, we need to call in and get an estimate.
I'm not a, a roofer, and, or, I'm not in construction, this may be a really dumb question.
I'm not a, a roofer and, or, I'm not in construction, this may be a really dumb question, but what would the possibility, or would it be cheaper, more expensive, to do some sort of a roof over?
No, it would, it, I think that, I think that we definitely need to look at that. I think we need to look at tying into the structure and, and going up and putting something from an insulation factor. I, I, I do not think that we need to go back with a flat roof, Commissioner Wills, and I think, but I, I mean, once again, to your point, Sheriff, uh, it's not what I do either, but I, I think that there are some efficiencies to be realized there and we need to look at that. If we're talking about three hundred K to redo a flat deck roof, that's gonna give us a twenty-year existence and not a lot of insulating factors and all that stuff, I think it's something we ought to take into consideration, you know?
That's what they're doing everywhere.
And keep in mind now, when you, when you look at that, I'm not an engineer, but there's one sitting in front of me. Uh, he's gonna tell you the same thing, you're gonna have to look at the structure underneath before you build upon it.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna have to make sure the structural integrity will support that, because you're not talking just a roof now. You'd have to put walls up there.
You talk wind load and everything.
And also, every bit of that, and then that, that all factors in. Then also, there's four units up there, we have four AC units up there to control that area too. So, I mean, it's a good idea and it may be an idea of doing a buildup rather than a build over.
Yeah.
You know, and a lot of flat roofs are doing that now. They're doing a buildup on one side, they're sloping it where the water will leave.
Yeah.
Yes, you do have, you do have, that's correct, you do have the antenna towers as well.
There's a lot of variables to look at, no doubt.
Right, right.
Mr. Chair, is that a flat roof?
It is at this point, yes ma'am.
It's, it's a flat roof, Miss Bird, with some towers, some AC units, and there's, uh, something else y'all told me about.
Leaks. Lot of leaks.
I, 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 you know, I do know flat roofs are not...
In style.
When?
If we can budget it in, I'm not sure what's all required for that area. I just, I guess I'm just not agreeing with a flat roof.
Yeah, none of us are. I think, I think we need to look at doing a buildup there and you can do that.
Yeah. When, when was the last time y'all have been into the Sheriff's Office, just out of curiosity?
It's been a while.
Y'all need to come back.
Yeah.
I'm inviting y'all publicly, y'all need to come back, let's walk you around, show you what we're talking about. That way you can see for yourself.
I wanna see it, not that I don't believe you, but I wanna see it, yeah.
I wouldn't be needing it.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea. Um, like I said, it's been probably a year or so since I've been in there myself. But I know at one point, we, we did, we had a lot of intrusion there and some of the walls and different stuff as well.
Family members that spend time there, does that matter?
Well, I do too, I just don't think they're on the admin side.
Ask him, he can tell you all about it.
So that, that's the roof, um, let's, let's speak to his AC issues real quick.
I'm only gonna go if the sheriff let me drive his car from Gator Bank to the jailhouse with the lights on.
Okay.
I think he'll agree to anything right now to get you in the building, so. Um, he, they've had a lot of AC issues as well, um...
How long have we been with no AC? Two, two months?
Well, you're not with no AC, you're with half-capacity AC. There's a difference between none and half.
You come in there and stay a week in there with us and you tell us the difference.
Been there and done that.
Come on, no you ain't.
Oh, yes I am.
No, sir, it's hot. RCOs are bringing three uniforms a day to go to work.
AC is better than none. That's the reason we're trying to get you a new one, so you need to be nice, I'm trying to help you here.
Ninety-four Sunday, so if that's half, whoo.
Can't imagine with nothing.
Yeah.
Hundred and forty.
Hundred and eighty.
Mr. Chair, could, could you clarify though, could, because I do not know the current status. The last I heard was things were either in the air or on the ground, but they were coming as hard as they could.
They're, they're now working on it.
Okay.
They're there now, working on it. They showed up with other four compressors this morning, hopefully we'll have it done by tomorrow.
And, and, Sheriff, as I was educated, you know, the problem would have been remedied a few weeks ago, but there was incorrect equipment, uh, sent and installed.
Yeah, there's been some issues on that, I understand that, so.
And once again, that's not something you run to Fort Myers and buy. That has to be ordered, four to six weeks. And that's what people have to understand, everyone has to understand. This isn't something you just run over and pick up. This is your house AC, and that's the reason it's important where we're going here in a few minutes, because I'm actually trying to move to the same situation with you that I'm talking about with the courthouse.
Und瑩.
Till when you, when you're down, you're not a hundred percent down. I don't want your, I don't want you over there melting either.
You don't want it to be ninety-four, but you wouldn't mind eighty?
But, uh, once again, you should let your firearm back there. But that's, that's the reason I want to get to the other part of the conversation. I know we've replaced compressors and there's still an issue with the coils and different things with that unit. So we're discussing this, so we need to look at the situation as well as making sure that you don't have this issue again. And that's, that would be the same thing with another chiller and it's, once again, it's, it's, it's not a cheap fix, but they're, they got a quote, actually, they got a quote to come in, put a, uh, two syst, two-system chiller in, comfortable pumps, go to a water system, which Sheriff has gonna lower your light bill, you can give us a little money back. And they're gonna change the coil out in the air handler, so it'll be a water system, which is gonna be a lot more efficient. So that's something to look at, that's what we've been talking about as well. So, I was trying to help you and you was getting all nasty about it. I'm not coming to see you.
I wasn't being nasty. I was only being half nasty.
So, um, anybody have any questions to the sheriff on that or any, any question about clarification or?
I don't have a question, other than one, one statement being, if, if we spend, let's just, I mean, throw crazy, not a crazy number, let's throw five million dollars out there to get his facility up to a point where it's a lot more efficient. That's not even a penance in the grand scheme of things, if you were talking about building a new facility. So, you know, and, and so how many years has that facility been in existence? And, and we're talking about increasing its ability to exist a bunch more, I, I think, I mean, this is a great conversation to be having, so, yeah.
The only thing I would like to add to that, and you heard, I think, clearly what we were saying with regard to the other facilities. We don't want to Band-Aid and we want to make sure we holistically fix everything correctly as we go. I know that we've talked about over time, everything from the life safety stuffs, you know, for the, you know, the inmates was non-operational at certain times and maybe ever. And so, the only thing I would ask again is that you and your team, uh, please look at it holistically and make sure that as we bite the bullet, that we're biting the whole bullet and, and we don't have to cross this bridge again in, in the near future.
Now, if we could combine that with Mr. Bowen, you guys, take him in there, if you keep him as long as you need him, just lock the door behind you, then we can actually go through there and find out what we got. You can't go without him?
I can, no. People die every day.
No, no, I won't.
No, people die, I need him.
Well, think of it this way, Ms. Butler, if he takes him in there, we can get free labor.
Yeah.
We're saving a lot of money, so.
We're talking about the fire pump.
We, uh, the fire pump, um, there's, there's other issues in there as well. I mean, your, your alarm systems, different things, like, like Commissioner Swindell said, we really need to visit and find out what it's gonna take to get your facility whole, is what he's asking. So, yes, the fire pump is part of that conversation.
And that's, that should be up front, that's very important, very...
I'm embarrassed.
Are we, are we?
Not that conversation.
Do we have something working on that with the pump, Mr. Bowen? Can you?
Yes.
Yeah, actually, I was supposed to meet with a gentleman Wednesday.
Alan?
Microphone, yeah.
I was supposed to meet with a gentleman Wednesday, I was tied up and couldn't meet with him, but we're discussing, uh, actually, this has started months ago. Uh, the, this pump has been damaged for the last twenty years. We tore it out, uh, gentleman, uh, Mr. Kelly's been working with us on this. Uh, we went as far as we could with that. So now we're looking at, because it sits a lot and doesn't run as often as it should, so we're talking about going LP where the motor doesn't get damaged, it can sit there twenty years without running. Um, and I was supposed to meet with a gentleman Wednesday and I didn't meet with him Wednesday because I was tied up elsewhere. Uh, we're looking at, and I'll come back with a number, way less than the sixty thousand dollars I was quoted for of the last one, but I just didn't have enough time to make it there Wednesday. But, um, for the next week or so, I'll have a number and a, and a setup for, so we're real close.
Good. Are you, you had backup generators, I suspect?
Yes.
Okay, they all, everything's functional? The generators?
Generators, yes, but not the pump.
Not the pump, but, but hurricane situation, right, but lose power and you, you still have, okay, all right, you're good, all right.
So, yeah, I just can't stress enough how, how significant that pump is.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have that remedied soon then, but in the, in the big picture, we've gotta look at, like we said, you know, earlier, getting your, getting your facility whole. And I, I would really like to have a good, you know, discussion about the, the chiller system and stuff there as well.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Swindell, you kind of talked about it. How many generators do we have countywide on our facilities? And, and do we have a maintenance plan or do the, do we have any ATSs? Do they kick off on themselves, fire off? Is there a service plan? What do we got there?
Actually, we've been doing the service in-house, but my employees have been cut just about in half, so we don't maintain it the way we used to.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I just met with our new EOC director last week. He's working on a plan right now of setting some forth like that, um...
We haven't ready to have the attorney?
If I got a token, it's soon.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, he sent yesterday, um, a proposal and, um, you know, Mark's been out this week and so hopefully next week he'll look at it. Uh, he went out and got quotes and trade winds, um, was the low, lowest quote. They also do all the US Sugars, um, generators as well, so they're in the area and we've talked to them numerous times, um, over the last year. And so we're hoping to be able to proceed with that.
You think you'll have that by the June twenty-sixth, I mean, July twenty-sixth meeting?
It is, if Mark can...
Okay.
If he's agreeable with it and he has time to review it, yes, so that'll be...
It wasn't advertised, it was just y'all just called and...
It, it fits under a certain amount, you can get quotes and we have a grant, EMPA and EMPGEM grants will pay for it. And that'll be for all of our generators that we oversee for EM purposes. And it includes generators that are in the schools that we use for shelters.
We just recently get some generators, do we get those in or, we did get those?
So we got the five generators that we received from North Florida. Uh, one went to LaBelle Fire Station and four of them went to the schools for sheltering. And so that will include those generators as well to be on maintenance.
Who, who's gonna watch over them?
Are the generators that were picked up last year?
We just picked them up a few weeks ago.
Each month that, uh, uh, Mr. Mitch wanted to see?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Who's gonna watch them?
I'll be part of the... I'm gonna ask what she's saying.
Yeah, they're gonna check them?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but...
They'll be on a planned maintenance schedule.
Okay, but on, I mean, I know we weren't supposed to have this discussion today, but if, if we have generators that are being installed, who's gonna install them? That's, that's as much of the cost many times as it relates to generator, those standby system.
So, um, Richard is working with Kevin McCarthy with the school as far as what is required and, and working on getting them hooked up to the facilities themselves. Richard is our new EM director.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The facilities and the schools and, you know, and once again, we're not supposed to, we weren't supposed to talk about this today, but we need to make sure that they understand what part of those facilities run through the generators. I know last year we had, you know, several questions about that and we need to make sure in there that we do have some automatic transfers. We do have a lot of manuals, but we do have some of the automatics we was asking about earlier. But we just need to make sure that we're informed and they know, last year they were asking me, why are we in the dark? Why don't this, and then, and it is in the wrong part of the school. That part of the school wasn't wired, so. In order to run the, it doesn't run the whole facilities, it runs lights, some receptacles and some air handlers. It doesn't run nothing else but that.
Well, that's exactly right and, and, uh, you know, this is something that, that we do as a company. Uh, and so I, I just, first off, I don't have a lot of confidence, uh, in seeing some of the things that I'm not being repaired with our schools. So that makes me very concerned that we have generators that we're looking at a maintenance plan, but we don't, I mean, we're, we're probably six months or further out, I would say, before we're gonna get any of those hooked up. So it'd be really interesting to see how that plays out. Um, I just want to see what the overall plan is for the county, because it seems so many times that when we need that generator system, you know, I heard a horror story, I believe it was you specifically, Mr. Bowen, that went and got the one running for the EDC office or maybe it was the county offices proper, but, you know, I don't want to hear our head of maintenance in the middle of the throes of a storm, having to go and deal with something like that. And, and, you know, I just think a lit, a little bit of preparation on our, on our front end would be better served for us. And I'm happy to hear that the, that the jail has one. I've never asked that, embarrassed to say that publicly, but I don't know if it gets tested. I don't know if it fires off, you know, at eight o'clock the first of every month or something, you know? So, you know, those, those are things and I've never really delved into that detail of the county. Uh, we were tested a little bit with that last year. I'd, I'd love to know what our concept is a little bit with that, so, thank you.
I'd like to see y'all come by, we can give y'all a total walkthrough of the jail. I mean, I know Mr. Wills is pretty familiar.
I was gonna come by last week.
You're gonna, you're gonna stay awhile if you come with me.
You will.
But yeah, back to the generators and that, that is a, that's a bad situation. Like you said, you, um, you've got your, you've got your employees out in the middle of a storm, they're getting blown sideways on a generator and the fact remains that they're in place and a lot of times it's as simple as starting it up and moving the transfer switch. And it's a lot of times it's that, but we don't ask the people on site to do that, because they're not familiar with that.
No.
We don't want them in there, that could be a real bad situation. So in the past, county employees go to those sites and actually do that, that's the reason that's going on. Yes, Ms. Oliver?
I know we're talking about generators right now, so I wanted to lay it out. We do not have one on the judicial wing and I know we're talking about storms right now, but if you think of a safety aspect of the judicial wing, when we have inmates in an elevator or in their jail cells and we don't have a generator, if the power goes out even slightly, we have no generator that kicks on and we don't have eyes in the courtroom. So sometimes even our, our emergency lights don't come on. So just some fault, um, so our technology go down, everything. So we don't have anything on the judicial wing to keep us up.
Is there on the admin side?
Yes.
Partial, there's own, there's own admin, yes, but there's only does partial of the facility.
That's another thing, Commissioner Swindell, it could be as simple as picking up another circuit and, and giving you, I mean, that's something that needs to be, an analysis needs to be performed, you know, just to see what we would have to have. When you talk about that jail cell, that's a holding cell, I think is what you said. Is that an electronic? I mean, is, 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 no, so it's a manual key, okay, all right. So everybody's in the dark and...
Everybody's in the dark.
Okay.
And, uh, back being said, we would have no way of even getting, I mean, we'd have to come down the stairs and that kind of thing, but...
With a flashlight and a gun, okay.
And plus, it is, it is a safety issue.
Yes, ma'am.
You hear it, Mr. Bowen? Is that, is that something we can ask to?
Which I can check into, um, if you're not wanting to do the whole admin wing, you just want to do four cells and all that.
No, sir, I can't make that call. I would say, I think that's a good conversation to have with Ms. Oliver and the judges and the sheriff and say, what, what do we anticipate, you know, a, a worst-case scenario or a typical South Florida thunderstorm that's gonna knock us out and we lose a primary and we're out for an hour, hour and a half, two o'clock and it starts at ten o'clock in the morning? Well, obviously you'll probably not be able to continue with the work day, but there will be no life safety issues for people that are involved in that process.
And I'm not an electrical engineer, but to do the whole courthouse, you're a rough guess at the five hundred KVA. And I'm not an electrical engineer, but to do the whole courthouse, you're a rough guess at the five hundred K B A, you know, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, not to run it necessarily, but just to power a light where we can safely see how to exit, get out, right, I believe, is that not what you're saying?
Well, yeah, but you're talking elevators and everything else, so that's.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not talking about elevator, I'm not talking about any of that, I'm I'm not talking about even a two hundred and fifty K B As, it's, I'm talking about whatever we have in existence today. Running the numbers to see if it could, if it could handle a few more circuits to allow for another floor or some lights to be lit. So that, you know, the life safety, everything else goes off, you know what I mean?
We could do that, because we've actually did it with our I T room.
Yes, sir.
There's a generator at the old jail, which is the election office now, it it takes care of it, we also ran a line to our I T room, it takes care of it, we can look at running the line.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, yes, sir. But but that's a conversation that's outside of my scope as a policymaker. The people that are on the day-to-day use, I think, should be in a room chatting that out and hardened, you know, hardening up exactly what they want to see working and how they wanna see, how well do they want it lit, you know, so on and so forth. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Could Jennifer, could any of that funding come out, find some forfeit? Was that that wing?
It's possible that it could come out of some of the facility money, um, on the courthouse side, but we have to have the judge approve it.
Well, he'll prove it.
Part of that is now, we have, we, I mean, you're, we're saying we're totally in the dark, isn't there emergency fixtures throughout that facility that have battery backup?
Well, what she said was that some of those battery backups are not operating.
Well, no, and I understand that point, and that's a matter of going back to them and testing them, but you're still not in the dark.
No, sir, you're right, you're right.
Eventually, each receptacle, out of every other light or so, there's supposed to be a battery backup in that fixture, which means when the power goes off, you have light. So if you don't, that's a matter of maybe just, I mean, it could be a, a lot easier fix to put, make sure we have the batteries in the proper places that that brings those lights on, because, I mean. Right.
Chairman, I just go back to, I mean, we we could sit here and say it's a great idea for, um, Alan, for Mr. Bowen to prescribe somebody to go around and check every generator, and the fact is, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
And even if you hire certain companies that say they're gonna do it, if you don't assess what they're doing, it's not gonna happen either, you're gonna have to fire somebody. Worse is when the the need occurs where you need to have it, they haven't done their job and now you're you're missing the boat, so we see it happen all over the state of Florida all the time, so.
Got to dumb every two weeks.
They actually fire them up usually once a month, but but they have a record that shows how it works.
And a lot of our generators that are in place, solid and in place, they do, they they start and they run.
Yes, sir.
And so it's just a matter of getting the rest of them online and making sure we're, like you said, we don't wanna have to use them when we need them, we wanna be able to use them anytime.
When we want to.
Right. What does that take us to, Ms. Davis, we got the sheriff all upset and angry, he's buying lunch?
So the last, uh, item on this sheet is the, uh, Clueston Sub Office. So currently our Clueston Sub Office has somewhere between six and seven, I think, entrances at this time. And in addition to that, uh, the tax collector had a need to have a larger lobby. So what we were looking at is trying to come up with a way to have a consolidated entrance, um, to the best way possible, given the building's unique layout. And also accomplish the lobby area for the tax collector at the same time. So we've had, uh, someone coming up with some conceptual plans, I think the second draft is ready, Alan, for us to review, we haven't seen it yet, to be able to come up with a cost estimate to bring back before you, um, to consider. And so we wanted to include it in the schedule, uh, for sakes of financing.
That'd be one way in, one way out?
It wouldn't be, it 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 wouldn't be a hundred percent, it would probably be eighty percent coming through.
Because now they just go through everywhere.
Well, right, right, you, so you have the health department and then you have all of our, so the so the seven entrances I was talking about is just for our area, that doesn't even include the health apartment side.
Department be the same?
So it's very confusing when you come up there and for the constituents and they have to walk around the building and and it would be, um, really nice to be able to have a main entry.
Cut down the hallway.
Correct.
Yeah, the health department is a one entrance only, the only ones we get in the back door are employees.
Okay.
So the rest of that facility is just a one, one-door deal, you go in the front of that and.
Go in and come out.
That's right.
Okay. So that's what that line item is.
Fifty thousand will accommodate the expansion of the lobby for the.
It's an estimate, what we are looking to do is come out the front and, um, widen it and have it covered. And be able to come in where the, not, the entry where the tax collector comes in now, that would become a window probably, so you would go, uh, north of there. And, um, have a consolidated entrance that would go into a lobby area for the tax collector, it would expand his area that he is, um, in need of. And then you would have a door going from there into the hallway, that first hallway, so you could go right or left from there, everybody would come in and not have to go in that side door. And so in addition to that, we were looking at creating a way, there's a courtyard in the middle of that area that is not utilized.
Right.
And, um, to be able to come through the building and go through that courtyard to go to that backside. Um, and then, you know, bring it up to a little bit higher standard where it could be utilized, you'd have some outdoor space. And it would be, it would flow, it would flow much better coming in and out, you may or may not be able to do away with, um, one of the entrances going back to the property appraiser on the backside. Um, we're trying to figure that out, but that, that may not be able to work.
I just, I, I don't have a problem with the concept and I and I was there this week and see exactly what you're talking about, but just based on my experiences for what people like to charge us, fifty thousand seems low for that to happen.
More like a hundred.
Well, I I thought a hanger door would have been cheap too, but it was north of a hundred, that's for sure.
He was mad about it. He's still mad about it here.
I hadn't forgotten it yet.
We can increase the estimate for, just for sake of coming up with numbers.
What, I like to deal with reality, so I hate just increasing them arbitrarily, but, uh, I think that's cheap.
Chairman, uh, what if we just waited a little bit, I mean, there's a concept, um, it's 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 gonna have a price per square, it's gonna be attached to it probably, that gets a little bit harder than what you're saying, Commissioner Swindle.
So what, so what we were trying to do is we were trying to come up with a cost estimate, and so Alan took several folks over to come up with a a number and they just couldn't.
They're all over the place.
Yeah, without seeing some, something, you know, on paper, so we just, um, have, we have some, some things drawn up so they can look at it and come up with a better number for you.
Did, um, w- will this be one of the situations too where the particular constitutional may be able to help us as well with some of the costs associated?
I don't think so, so we have the responsibility to cover those costs.
Just was wondering. Every year, yeah.
So you can take it out of that.
Yep, which is great.
And so what I've done on my spreadsheet here, um, not, not what you're looking at there, but I've updated some of these numbers as we have, um, had some discussions, specifically the Chiller Inventory Repairs County Buildings was two seventy and then I added another hundred thousand to that, because you were talking about the handlers. Then I increased the fifty for the Clueston Sub Office to a hundred, and I think I've kept everything else the same.
The jail, the jail's not accurate on there, is it?
The jail repairs.
No, they're way north of three fifty. Just the roof alone, you've got, um.
No, the jail is gonna be, uh.
Three hundred just for the roof?
Yeah.
Chiller's a quarter of a million.
I'd say, I'd say you throw seven figures on the jail and hope that it's.
Hope it's under.
Yeah.
I would, just estimating, I was at six fifteen just for the jail.
Well, if I add, if I make it a million just for this schedule's sake, then, um, what we're looking at is, is a total of five point three seven oh.
Five point three seven oh.
And then I backed out the three hundred thousand to get your thoughts on giving Shane the okay to go ahead and start fixing Phase One, if you will, of the courthouse facade in the current year's budget that doesn't, wouldn't require financing, because we have that in place now. And it would, it would become five million seventy thousand dollars.
So the, my question, Mr. Chairman, is on that Phase One of the courthouse facade, it's a two hundred and sixty-five K rough. Um, but is, is that impeding Chris Tell or whoever the contractor is from having the ability, uh, to, it's it's a nine hundred, that that total uh, work should be nine hundred K, right? So is it less two hundred or am I in two different facilities now?
Not less.
Okay, so it would be less the two hundred, so your nine hundred now goes to, uh, uh, six thirty? Okay.
It was two hundred and sixty, basically two hundred and sixty-five thousand, and nine hundred and one thousand was an order of magnitude cost.
Okay, okay.
Two sixty-four and change, that was a guaranteed maximum price.
Okay, and nine hundred was a not to exceed as well, nine hundred and one.
It was a order of magnitude cost.
Okay, I hate that phrase, okay, I understand, um, that sounds so, uh, sexy, doesn't it, order of magnitude? Yeah, okay, Mr. Contractor Guy, uh, um. Shane, in your, in your opinion, I have not looked at the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar, uh, estimate, the 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 write-up I read, but does it look like it's natural and has Mr. Bowen looked at it from an occurrence event? Or do we need to go ahead and add, take it right up to that three hundred K number or whatever we have, that's a allocated leftover, if you will, and do four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work right now? And make it that much more tolerable, what are y'all's thoughts?
On the, I will speak for Mr. Bowen, I'll let him speak separately, but for me, on the east facade of that building, it's leaking into three constitutional officers' room, it's been a continuous leak. There is very, they've already, uh, facilities already replaced the drywall, there was moldy installation that had to be replaced, drywall's wet again.
That's done at two hundred and sixty-five, those those issues are taken care of.
That side's done, uh, Chris Tell put a little bit in contingency for doing drywall on the inside. Um, so Alan didn't have to contract that out, there is a lot of cracks, they're as wide as my hand.
Yes, sir.
Where the bricks going down, we've already got plans set up, ready to go for that. Um, we could break other phases out, but this one, this area here is the one where the, where we have known leaks, the other ones are cracks in the facade. Don't know about any leaks, but there's just cracks and need to have window, um, fastened to the structure, not to the brick.
So what kind of time period?
Hundred and twenty days, ninety and then thirty for stanchions.
Mr. Chair, I wanna hear from Mr. Bowen.
He likes to talk.
Shane covered all, there there are some areas that the the contractor's not sure about either, that we did not tear into, that we had damp walls, once we get into the walls, there could be other damage in there, that's our only concern to. But they guessed pretty close in the past, so that's what we're going by, so, but that's the only thing, because there's some unseen that we're not for sure about.
I'm hearing you two men say to me, you're recommending us to pull the trigger on this two hundred and sixty-five K, let's get it done, that's what you're saying.
Correct.
And don't worry about ballooning that and getting another phase rolled into there just right now, let's get this box checked.
The longer we wait, the more money it's gonna cost.
Yes, sir.
And the time, the hundred and twenty days will be read, start on the second phase.
Okay, my next question is, is Commissioner Swindle gonna be okay with them making a gross, uh, number of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty days, or is he just gonna be so angry he can't sleep at night?
Yeah, it's gonna get me a few twitches over here. And and we've said, and we've said this, I think Jennifer has said it multiple times, but I do think it's worthy of saying again, because we've got a, a great contingency of the public and and folks are watching from business and work as well. Five point three seven million, um, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, you know, we're pretty sure that's gonna cost that, but those are all estimates. And Jennifer, I don't know if y'all, Charles, if y'all wanna reestimate that, and we as a county, as a board, as as a judiciary, you know, body that watches over these tax dollars. We will look for every efficiency factor possible, we won't spend it if it's not necessary, and we will do everything we can to get the most cost-effective bids to ensure that we're not just spending arbitrary monies, and I wanna make sure everybody's aware of that. I know we are, but I wanna make sure we're all clear.
Just to that point, and Shane will tell you, when we were talking about the nine hundred thousand, so we had that discussion, what do we have to do, or what do we not have to do, what we need to do, all of it, what we have to do this first phase.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I had Shane go back and then make sure that there wasn't another efficiency that could be, that could be realized of that, and they said, no, that this is, this all has to be done.
And Mr. Chair, for the, for the benefit of the public, is the financial instruments that we will be looking at is not a bond where we take out a lump sum and we're paying back interest on that lump sum. It is, we'll get a line of credit up to a certain amount and you only pay that for what you draw down off of it. Plus interest.
And low interest.
And and I would like to, you know, and and point out, you know, another elephant in the room, and and that is, we went through a period of time where we didn't have two pennies to scrape together to to replace the air handlers or to even repair the leaks in the roof with, you know, that and that was a tough time on everyone. Kudos to our staff and our maintenance guys and Commissioner Wills and Alan Bowen and everybody for doing everything they can to get us to where we are, I I appreciate that. I know the sheriff just gets aggravated and and some, you know, and to know the constitutional's of, everybody has put up with may, way more than what they should have, but I do appreciate their patience and I do appreciate the staff, uh, in in doing what we do to get us here. And I, for one, am committed to to moving to a better place for everyone, so I just wanna make sure we do it correctly.
Chair, it's important they understand that the money that's being spent is needed and at the same time, if we don't go ahead and repair, we use more money, I catch it, than go ahead and, and, you know, and do the work. So it just needs to be noted that it it is a need, it's not something that we just wanna do, it's a need.
Ms. Mr. Chair, Ms. Butler, I hate to put you on the spot, and I normally would have talked to you about this privately, but, um, I haven't. But there was a time that you used to light me up pretty regularly, have we moved the needle in the right direction and 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 are we getting better with those facilities? You look at all of this that we're talking about today, these are things that we need to really be taking into consideration and 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 starting to engage in, yes, no, maybe, what are your thoughts?
It needs to be done.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, if if you don't do it, it's gonna cost the county more money in the long run.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, my thing is, you know, we're gonna have to be very, very, very careful about projects that Shane's working on, I mean, it costs us like two million dollars and then we get reimbursed.
Front and cash flow is your concern.
My cash flow.
Yes, ma'am.
Big concern right now, because I don't have the reserves anymore, I mean, they're gone.
Yes, ma'am.
FEMA comes along, well, when's FEMA gonna come, it could be this year, it could be next year.
It could be six years from now, yes, ma'am, absolutely.
It could be after I retire, you know, so, you know, your cash flow's gonna be the main thing that you, that you've really gotta take in consideration and Shane's gonna have to start checking with us to see if he can start a job, because we got a cash flow at, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's, you know, this is my big thing right now, it's just the cash flow, does this need to be done, you bet it needs to be done. Because I, many years that I've been there, I've watched them, especially him, you know. Just Band-Aid this, Band-Aid that, trying to save this, trying to save that, along with with Mitch when he was there, you know, just trying to save the dollar. And they fix it one day, a week later it's tore up again, more water on the floor, every time that water gets in there, it's causing problems.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, so yes, it needs to be done.
Good deal. Well, there, there's been times that I've sat in here and we've discussed, uh, yeah, I I I feel like I'm fifteen again and did something dumb at Pony League or something, calling Ms. Ms. Butler to, so I'm I'm excited to hear you say that, Ms. Butler, appreciate you giving us that that lesson.
Yeah, and then once again, I mean, that's that's where we're at, we get beat up on that a lot, you know, I know, uh, in years past, they've, well, they just wanted to, wanna make this look nice, that look nice, what's wrong with that? Our our county facilities should look nice, they should be nice, the buildings should be whole, they should be well buildings, when the public comes into our facilities, they expect to be safe, they expect to be able to do their business and leave that facility without having to worry about anything. So what we're talking about now is is all necessity, none of it is, let's just puff this thing up and make it this or that, it's necessity, and like you said, it's been necessity over the years. Well, lack of funds, we couldn't do it, but the fact is, we've gotta get to a place to where if we don't do it, then we're gonna be talking about things that Commissioner Swindle's makes his, uh, and Commissioner Turner makes their blood pressure go up as well, building, buildings. And I'm with them, because we have some beautiful facilities, we just need to get them back up to to par where they need to be, so, um, once again, this this is a necessity we're looking at, it's not a, it's not I want. And I'm not sitting here saying that I know everything about the facilities and I I don't, there's things that I haven't been in in a couple of years, I haven't been in the sheriff's building over a year and a half, I haven't been in some of our buildings. But I can tell you, for eighteen years I was in those buildings and I was, I was looking at these things, uh, Mr. Bowen and myself, we'd sit there and scratch our head trying to figure out how we was gonna really make this over here work, because we had this over there. And we're to the point now where we do, we just need to come together and let's fix these facilities and get them to where they need to be.
I think the message is clear, what do you need from us?
Well, the first thing is an official motion, uh, to direct Shane to move forward with the guaranteed maximum price on the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar repairs on the east of the side.
So moved.
Okay, we got a, a motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Harris, is there any further discussion on this?
That means, that means you're gonna execute a contract with Chris Tell to do that portion of the contract.
Yes, Chairman, just to make, since, uh, county attorney's not here, I just wanna make sure I get the motion right, we have a contract with Chris Tell, I don't know if it needs to be an amendment or a change order, but I want permission for the county attorney to either issue a, approve a supplemental task authorization or a contract amendment or any other legal actions required in order to.
You see it, so moved, standing attorney, you see a problem with that?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, once again, we have that motion, uh, Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Harris, is there any further discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before voting, if you can take public comment on this one.
It's not a public hearing, is it?
It, you have, you're required to.
We can do that, does anyone in the public wanna address this before we close the vote out? Seeing none, once again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
The the next item would be to direct the county administrator or and his designee to pursue financing, um.
You don't need a motion for that, you just need direction?
I I would like direction to go ahead and put, a cap please, would help me with my negotiations.
Is it, uh, five three is where we're at?
Five point three seven.
Let's do this, can we, can, does it matter if we, uh, we're five point three seven, some of our numbers aren't hard, some of them are gonna come back and fluctuate a little bit, plus we have a twenty-three percent. You know, you did the adder to get to arrive at this, but I think the commodities are gonna move again. Could we give him the ability to, could we give Charles and Jennifer, uh, the ability to chat and 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 when the talking with these institutions say, is it five, you know, is there a different rate for five five, five, four point seven, you know, how does that all work out?
Just let him go up to.
Y'all, y'all get after it.
Ten million dollar line of credit.
Let him go up to six.
And then we won't take but what we have to have.
It's a line of credit.
Let him do this, let him, let him, I I like what Commissioner Swindle said. That gets scary though, because if he knows he has ten million dollars.
He gonna spend it if we don't approve it.
I have a, I have a schedule in front of you that I I will commit on the record that that is the schedule we're gonna be working off of, and each one of those items are gonna be coming back for you for final approval.
Okay, but do this though, when you have your chat with your your entities, see if there's, see what the rates look like for ten, six, five, so on and so forth, where, you know.
Yes, sir, we'll see what we need to beat down the interest rate. We'll see what we need to beat down the interest rate.
Because it's got a...
Point two.
Yeah. Under three.
No. We don't, he, we're gonna, he's gonna look at different rates and, and look at a possible ten lien cap, ten lien, and just see what, if there are any, so we're not gonna give him a specific cap today. Not okay? Any of the chairman tell you to do it?
Yeah.
Ms. Butler, would you feel more comfortable if they took a formal motion?
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, uh, we allow, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we allow the county administrator to go and pursue, uh, uh, financing options to bring back to the Board of County Commissioners as associated with the capital improvement schedule that's been presented today.
Line of credit.
Line of credit.
I'll second the motion.
Any, any, just line of credit. If somebody lending institution has some credit saying this, I didn't want to give you something.
Thank you.
Look at it.
Okay, so we got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Turner and second by Commissioner Swindle. Do we need to have a public comment on this as well?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the public would like to address this? Yes, ma'am. Could you come to the microphone, please, ma'am? Or can you, can you get it to her? Yes, ma'am, if I could reach her or not. Uh, no, ma'am. No, ma'am.
There's no, there's no proposed cap at this point. We're looking at just a line of credit. So we're not necessarily proposing a cap.
Yes, ma'am, this is, right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
For discussion purposes, this is, this is all theoretical, if you will. I, I, could you clarify that, just so everybody understands? I mean, what's, this, this isn't something that's...
No, this isn't, this isn't a hard cost yet. This isn't drilled down yet. This is just an estimate to get us moving forward to get to that place where we'll know what the, what the hard numbers are and then we can move from there. So just make clarification on that. All right, uh...
Will those be back in July too?
We will do our best to move this as aggressively as possible. I personally would like to see it be back in July, but it could be the first or second meeting in August as we're closing to the budget. My guarantee to the board is that this will be a part of the package with the budget that you move to adopt in the public hearings in September.
Good. I mean, that's very important, that, that drives some very important topics on the budget discussion. Now, I would love to see this happen with the budget and the direction we've given you, but if we have to do anything different, we need to know.
All, all of your budgetary development discussions between now and adoption will include this topic.
Okay. Thank you. So we have the motion and the second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have anything else left on the agenda?
Hey, can we, can we ask questions or say things? Can we make comment?
Sure.
Is that okay? Is that all right?
Depends on what you're gonna talk about.
No, so it's related. It's related and it goes back to what Ms. Butler said and it goes back to pulling some data that, and I know that we're waiting to get some final data for the debris cleanup and things and I know the last meeting you were really close to having some of that done. That's not my specific question. The question is, when can we go to the municipalities and say, okay, we're ready for your checks now to, for your piece that we covered? Can we do that? Who do we, who's the right person? Is that, do, do, is the board, do y'all agree we need to be doing that sooner rather than later?
We're waiting on the final bill.
We paid money out for municipality debris cleanup. We need our money back. I thought he was...
Oh, no, they have to be hours away from having final figures.
Yeah, I thought he was close.
There's an estimate that was pretty strong. So my answer to you, Commissioner Swindle, that you've asked is yes, we need to be making that request, even if it's nothing more than, hey, we're just shooting you a nice letter that says, get prepared. If y'all want to come over and sit with our staff and start tweaking those, we, we need to do that.
I think that's a good idea. That's, that's a good approach to it, I believe.
Because they gotta start preparing for budgets too. However, they gotta do whatever math that they're gonna do with regards to, uh, payment. And I also think that it, it helps to clarify as we're moving forward with the new theory of how we may bid this, now they can start making those preparations as well.
To be clear, FEMA is gonna reimburse them, not us, for what their portion of it was, correct?
No, sir.
We're gonna get FEMA reimbursement for what we did for them?
Yes, sir.
Well, that may be a whole different conversation and they may say we're just waiting to get it from FEMA.
We have to prorate it out. Moving forward, per board direction at the last meeting, is individual meetings between the two cities and my office to let them know they're gonna have their own contract. We're just leveraging the bulk for the procurement.
However, Mr. Chair, I think that there's a percent of that still should be coming from the municipal policies and or whatever entity it is. And so that, I mean, we, we need to see that. That's, that's a hard cost to realize.
Yes, sir. Because there's a fund that we need to start putting some funds back in.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any? Anybody in the public? Yes, ma'am.
On this court, um, the courthouse that you have here in Clueston where the tax collector, no, that is your sub-office?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking about doing a wraparound where you just have one entry and include so, and click, um...
The health department, Ms. Harris?
No, not the health department.
She's talking about...
It's the sub-office is what she's talking about.
So, so, so do you understand the question, the, kinda?
I, I kinda understand that. We, we were talking about building an entrance in the front of the building, which would make it more centrally located, also define where everything was, is what we're talking about.
I, I, actually, Commissioner, correct me if I'm wrong, it would not necessarily be in the front of the building. So we're, so as you walk into now where the health department campus is... I understand, what I'm trying to do is answer your question, so where the, yes, ma'am, that's where, that's where all of that would potentially have one entrance that takes you to now supervisor, clerk, uh, tax collector right there. And they're trying to figure out what they're gonna do where the entrance to the property appraiser.
More, more running.
And building its own. Yes, ma'am.
And I'm calling that a wraparound, which is a hallway type thing.
Could be, Ms. Harris, I think there's a couple of different ideas that they, that they're contemplating right now.
You go in, turn left.
Is that for a safety concern?